Good morning and welcome to our August 20, 2019 Board of Commissioners briefing. And we have an invocation sworn by Commissioner George A. Cocke Jr. and also the pledge by Commissioner A. Cocke. We go to approval amendments and Mr. Hightower, we've got some discussion just with agenda. Got a few items there we need to add or?
Yes, sir, we do. And Carol's packing out or passing out a pack of information.
That's like a new pack to me.
And we're supposed to read this before nine o'clock?
That's easy. So we have our jet port director out in the audience is warning. Good morning, Brandon.
If the board has a copy of it, I've done a memo to kind of explain what we're trying to do. Number one is to add to consent agendas, number seven, volunteer fire department funding agreements for 2019-20. Memo attached and Brian Taylor is here. There are no changes from the previous year's funding agreement. So we would like to add that to the consent agenda. Number eight, proclamation recognizing Miller's Chapel AME Zion Church for their 144th homecoming and Founder's Day celebration on September 1st, 2019. And Commissioner Cromartie has asked that we add that to the agenda. Number nine is the appointment of Barry Gray as a Wayne County representative to the Census Bureau Committee. And then we have a memo attached to that as well. Motion number 10 is motion to set public hearing for September 17th, 2019 for electronic gaming operations amendment. As the board is aware, we did have that on our agenda to discuss and approve today, but after consultation with the attorney, it does need a public hearing before we can make any changes. So those are things that we would like to add to the consent agenda. There's a couple of budget amendments we would like to add and to remove as well. One is we've talked about before, the jail facility study is $27,000. The credit 27 to the jail facility studies and debit from facility repairs and maintenance. And then also budget amendment number 70, which was in your packet for WCDAs. Working with Mark, we would like to remove that budget amendment at this time. So also as part of the project, and this goes to new business. As the board is aware, we've been working with RCC on our contract for tower sites and radios and our backup equipment. We need to do it a budget amendment 96 that will move 2 million 805,264 dollars to the capital debt fund project ordinance. And we would be taking that from fund balance. And again, we will be paying fund balance back once the financing does go through. And then under new business, number five, as I just mentioned about the gaming discussion, we would remove that since we're setting the public hearing. And then 5A is add to new business RCC contract for the tower sites and radios. And a copy of that contract is in your new packet.
As counsel, whenever these contracts you review?
Yes, sir. And then 5B is the approval of capital projects budget amendment. And we do the budget amendment to move the money, but this will be the capital projects budget amendment. Again, apologize for all the walk-ons, but it was just one of those perfect storms where we just had to get some things, make sure things got passed and in front of you so we can move forward on the project.
Are we discussing these at this time?
We can do that when we go through the agenda. But this is recommended as far as changing to the agenda that you have in front of you.
So are there any other amendments or discussion of the agenda? No, I guess we can move on to new business.
Okay, first is special presentation. Motion to approve, number one, motion to approve opioid use disorder awareness week proclamation. And I believe Dustin Pittman's coming to and will make that request. Number two, presentation of retirement plaque by Wayne County Public Library Director, Dr. Phillips. Number three, presentation of retirement plaque by Wayne County Health Department Director, David Madden. Number four is update from Michelle Estrada on community outreach. Then we will have our public comments. The appointment committee, I don't think we have anything today. And then under unfinished business, number one, motion to approve contract with Tyler Technologies for county software replacement for finance payroll, human resources, planning and inspections contingent upon county and staff attorney proof. We can discuss that now or you can wait for the meeting. It's your pleasure.
Well, I undoubtedly have some questions on it. Do we, Ms. Chairman, do we discuss this now or would we want to wait? I was a little confused by this in that it appears as if there is an outright purchase price. And then there was an option B where you basically are leasing. Could you explain that?
So there are two options that the committee considered. One is on premise and Ryan's here, he can discuss a little bit more of the technical side of that. But the short of it is we would house, with on premise, we would house the software here along with all the data. The security for that data would be here in our servers. And we would continue to use our IT personnel to manage this software. Because we're using more, our equipment, our infrastructure, our personnel, that is a lease, that is a less expensive option. So you have your purchase price, which is a one-year contract and then to be renewed annually. And you have your annual purchase price and then your annual maintenance charge. And then the second option is called software as a service or SaaS. A lot of people use the term cloud. And that is where basically your data, your software is being housed by Tyler Technologies on their servers. It is being handled by their personnel using their infrastructure. If there was a disaster, if there was a security breach, they would be responsible for the liability of any security issues, any data breaches, things like that. And that is a more expensive option that is using their personnel, their servers, and they are maintaining our data. And that is required, that's a three-year contract that is required to be signed with the cloud, basically, contract.
Further explanation?
Yes, sir.
Are you, this option, first option is 1.248, 1,248,000. Is that all-inclusive? Is that the total price?
That is, yes, sir, that's the total price of the contract with, we've gone through and checked with planning and inspections on their modules. We've worked with, of course, finance, HR, IT, and then had our attorneys involved to make sure that we've covered all of our bases. So all the modules and things that we could think of. Now, having said that, we're still a year out from implementation. There could be additional equipment that must be purchased. If we find that, you know, for convenience sake, scanning and documents, things like that, we may have to purchase additional equipment. There may be changes to modules. We may have some data conversion costs. We are trying not to do data conversion because it frankly be easier and cut back on our cost. But those things would be added on as we kind of go through our discovery process. And we still do not anticipate if we go with this option, we do not feel like we would still exceed the amount that we budgeted for in the financing of 1.4 million.
And what is the annual cost?
The annual cost is around 150,000 for the on-premise solution. Let me make sure I'm telling you correctly on that. 151,933 dollars. So the first year, that would be included in our implementation cost. And after that, that implementation cost would be, excuse me, not implementation, that maintenance cost would be ongoing.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Ryan, could you come up? I'm just not quite understanding why it would go from 1.2 up a half a million dollars if they host it.
If what? I'm sorry.
If they are going to host it and maintain it.
Because they're assuming all liability, they're taking care of it.
A half a million dollars?
Correct.
That was going to be my question. You think we can handle ourselves on site and protect our data?
Well, of course. I'm like, yes.
Well, that's, you know, that's.
There is, there is a cost to that that is not captured in this presentation that we incur by having that housed here. Maintenance, support, administration, oversight, storage, all that we're currently paying for that is a piece of what we'll be doing going forward. In other words, we're not, we're not keeping that 500,000 dollars. When we, if we house that here, there are maintenance costs that we incur now that would be a part of that. Does that make sense? So if we're paying 100,000 dollars for maintenance on the piece of equipment that that data is going to reside on, there's a percentage of that that will now, you know, a piece of that will be a part of what we're doing going forward. So if we're paying 100,000 and we're storing that data on the server, there is a portion of that 100,000 that accounts for the new software. Does that make sense?
So which way we going to come out cheaper, is I guess is my final question. If we can do it here ourselves, will we going to come out at a lesser amount or?
I mean, on the surface, yes, we, we are cheaper going forward with on premise.
I do want to point out one thing, Mr. Daughery, that I failed to mention whenever you were asking about the contract. It does appear to be a half a million dollars difference. The cloud contract requires a three-year signing. So that contract amount is 1.78 million.
Over three years?
Correct. The on-premise is just a one-year contract. And we basically put forth what we could, what we would be able to finance or what we would have to finance if we were to do this.
So, I'm sorry, I was going to say, what's the amount minus the two years?
So if you take out, if you wanted to make them comparatively over three years with the annual maintenance and all that stuff, it's really about a 250,000 dollar difference. But, but to be, I mean, to be transparent, there is a difference each year in the annual maintenance. So the cloud maintenance is higher each year after that.
Well, if I'm correct, we currently are doing all of the storage and the maintenance and so forth on our existing software accounting packages and so forth. So this one may be a little bit more complicated and have a little bit more. But we do already incur a cost on maintaining our current software.
Correct.
And basically, we wanted to bring these two options to you because our goals when we, when we did this, this software search was to try to make it as efficient as possible for our departments. And so, you know, this would make it more efficient, this would basically check all of our, our goals off of our list. However, we do understand, we do understand the cost involved. And after discussion with the county manager, he has asked us to please consider and recommend the on-premise solution. But we wanted you to have the information because this was originally our, our goal, our objective in the software search. And we just wanted to make sure you had all the information available to you.
Yes, Ramaya.
So your preference is the three-year contract. Is that the preference?
On-prem. The on-premise solution.
The county manager's recommending the on-premise solution.
And the reason why is really just the cost basis in that we were doing it now. And where it is going, and again, I am not the technical person. Most everything is going to the more cloud and off-premise and being the responsibility of somebody else to manage your data. Since they're the ones that will be responsible for any hacks or any of those type issues, that is where the trend is going. However, the cost at this time was one of the big concern in recommending just keep it on site now. And maybe that's something we can look at in the future.
One other question. But let's, am I interpreting this correctly? The one-year option is 1.2 million. That, what happens to next year? Is it continuous at one point?
It's, no, sir, it would, that, that particular contract would have an annual maintenance, which we pay now for our regular software. You have to pay for upgrades, annual maintenance, things like that. And that amount was 151,000, almost 152,000.
Okay, so it is after the initial one, first 1.2.
Yes, sir.
It's much, it would be much cheaper per year than the three-year contract. That's what I was looking at.
Yes, sir. And the difference really, I mean, I'm going to tell, I'm going to speak a little bit more in, in what I can understand. But the difference is really you're paying for the software upfront and buying it upfront. And then after that, you're just, you're basically having them maintain it, upgrade it, things like that.
Yeah, okay.
Whereas with the cloud, you're kind of almost leasing it. I mean, that's the way I see it.
Yep, that's normal. That's normal.
Ms. Chairman, what are we currently paying to maintain our current software?
It's, it's around 60 to 70,000 dollars. And that is just finance and HR, so that does not include planning and inspections. I did reach out to planning and inspections and because theirs is, I think, such a, such a dated system, they actually don't have maintenance on it anymore. So to that degree, we'll have sort of a new cost associated with that. But you're also going to have a much more upgraded system.
They're all coming under this though, right?
Yes, sir. This includes finance, HR, payroll, planning and inspections.
And I suppose I have one last question. And that is that the department heads of IT, finance, payroll, HR and planning have all signed off on this and are all recommending that the commissioners approve this.
Yes, sir.
So if anything goes wrong, we know which head should go at.
Yes, sir. They are all painfully aware.
I would like to say as well that I've done a couple of data or software conversions in my career. This has probably been vetted as well as anything that I've ever seen. I think you had.
But we have heard this before.
Well, we had 11 people, I believe, on the committee to review. They met multiple times, took field visits. And, and I think that they're very confident and comfortable in making this recommendation. The question that we have right now is not, should we do Tyler Solutions? Is how do you feel about either going to the cloud, which is more expensive but safer, or hosting on site, which is cheaper? Is that summing it up fairly well?
Ms. Chairman? And, and like he said, you know, we've heard this before. But at least we've got somebody that can explain it to us now.
And we have, we did do a survey with all of our users because we wanted to make sure we have buy-in from our employees too. Because they've got to use it every day and they are all excited about a change. So basically, what we're asking today is, I mean, the county manager has recommended the on-premise solution. And if you all agree with that, what we are asking is for you to approve the contract subject to county attorney and staff attorney approval. They have actually already looked at this in a preliminary manner. But the contracts differed based on which option we chose, premise or on cloud. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is consent agenda. Applications for elderly or disabled exclusion and they look fine, recommended by staff. Applications for disabled veteran exclusion and they look fine as well, recommended. Excuse me, number three is budget amendments and I will turn that back now.
So they do look a little different this time just because now instead of having one combined memo, the county manager thought it might be a little bit easier to have the departments provide you a more detailed explanation with each budget amendment. So behind each budget amendment is a, an explanation from the departments. Your first one is for the sheriff's office. And I believe this one, you may have seen this one before. Originally, they were taking it out of their regular general fund budget. However, now they are asking to reallocate 16,086 dollars from seized property funds. And this is for the purchase of moving equipment for the helicopter. For the solid waste department requesting to reallocate 5,920 dollars. They had a dump trailer placed in their budget. They did not think it would exceed the capital asset amount and it did come in a little bit higher. So they are moving it to a capital outlay line item. Yes, sir.
Before we go to the further, I want to ask one question of the sheriff right there. That piece of equipment, spotter equipment, was that just something that could slide underneath the helicopter as opposed to that with all you had to land on?
That is correct. It's a lot safer. Yes, sir, you, it's kind of a big pallet jacket.
I remember us landing on that.
Yeah, it's a lot safer to pallet jacket rather than try to spot it on that pallet.
I just wanted to ask that question.
You've got to be on your toes to do that.
When I flew with them, they landed right on it.
And they're good at it, but it is a lot safer. Commissioner Daughery enjoyed that part of it.
I was getting there.
Yeah, I'm still not going to ride that helicopter.
For the health department, this is number 72. They did have a decrease in their amount of grant for the Smart Start program. This is the partnership for children in Wayne County. And so they are, they are reducing the line items in that program accordingly. That was 7,040 dollars. For services on aging, they are requesting to allocate funds from the family caregiver support program. This is part of their ECC grants. And they did have a slight decrease, so they are adjusting for that as well. For services on aging, they're requesting to appropriate funds for an increase in their health promotions grant. And this total increase was 2,097 dollars. For the sheriff's office, they're requesting to anticipate and appropriate 31,92 dollars and 64 cents. And these are for insurance proceeds on a vehicle. For the health department requesting to appropriate, I'm sorry, anticipate 31,537 dollars. These are additional funds awarded by DPH for the WIC program. For the board of elections, you will see some, there's a lot of, I think there might be a lot of paperwork behind this. I can't remember how much we included. But this is for the purchase of the voting equipment in the amount of 293,055,50 cents. This is not the entire amount of the project that we budgeted in the debt financing. However, I don't believe all the equipment has been approved by the state yet. So he is only purchasing what has been approved by the state and certified by the state.
What was the budget number?
Do you not see that one, number 86?
I don't see, you've got the information in here, but you don't have the budget. Okay, I do see it. Okay, it's on back there.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, you skipped over Kevin Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I sure did. It was connected to another one. Okay, so let's go back to Kevin's. Number 82, appropriating his fund balance in the amount of 34,650 dollars. And this is for the purchase of a 15-passenger van. And he does have a justification behind it. I don't know if you all have had a chance to read it, but he's, he's got a good list of the repairs and things like that.
If the board remember, he didn't make this request during the budget process. And we were trying to move around vans that we did have. These are vans that are basically used for summer camps and taking kids on 4H trips. So we tried to adjust internally our fleet of what we had. But what we gave him was not really adequate for what was needed. So that's, the fund balance that he's using is his appropriated fund balance. It is not just a fund, fund balance.
Do I remember that you told us what I'm called on fire?
Yeah.
Well, it started smoking this bit.
Not, not real full fire, just smoking.
Well, then you, you bring up another question. I didn't know he had a fund balance.
He does have, he does have.
Why would he have a fund balance?
It is appropriated fund balance.
Appropriated?
Well, it's, it's kind of like social services, how, so he has program user fees that were, that are carried over to the next year that did not get used that year in the program. And so those get carried over into his fund balance. So his is fund 117, just like DSS and health have their own funds. And he has, we have asked him to use that for purchases in the past, like with the Maxwell Center. He used that for their furniture and things like that.
How much is in this fund balance?
I'll check for you.
I'd like to know.
Okay.
About this kind of world. No, I'd just like to know. I didn't remember that.
I'll, I'll check on that for you, Mr. May.
I don't have a problem with it. It's just, I didn't know. Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
On vehicles like this, I know this is, the 4H keeps coming up in a lot of his things. Does he get any reimbursement back from the state or any other agency for things like this?
Not that I'm aware of.
He does though for running the programs.
Yes, sir. And this is, the balance of that is where the, where the fund balance is. Any leftover funding, that's where his appropriated fund balance is.
And they do receive grant funds too, so. So your next one, I believe, is number 86, board of elections. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the board of elections equipment, a little over 293,000 dollars. And this is going to be basically financed through the debt financing later in the year. But because he has an election coming up, he did request that we go ahead and purchase the equipment that he can use, which has been state certified. There is still some equipment that has not been state certified that he will have to wait to purchase.
Is that included software that goes with this? I'm sure the software goes with it.
That's a good question. I'm assuming it is because it talks about the license fee and installation.
Ryan says yes.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
According to the paper, and if it's wrong, it's the paper's fault. When he was interviewed by the paper about this software or new machinery or whatever, he mentioned it was very similar to what we have now. I mean, I don't understand why you would buy something very similar to what you've got now. Maybe Ryan can explain it better, but.
It's the hardware they're replacing is the problem. The software's not, it's not the issue. It's the hardware that's in the life that's for, he's basically piecing together some things. So they're out of parts basically and it's not, it's the hardware being replaced.
It's kind of like a, your computer and your printer, after a certain time, you just got to replace the sucker. It is how?
I think he's 12 years old.
Oh, it's older than that. I bet it's older than that. I mean, I was on the board whenever we acquired those. I was a young man at that time.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, any additional questions on budget amendments? Okay. Any additional questions on the budget amendments? Again, we also did pull out the WCA one as well.
It was the good news, if you'll look at this, we got a trade-in on that old equipment of 65,000 dollars. Wonder what they're gonna do with it.
That great.
You know what? I just thought about this. Our walk-on, the agenda, the budget amendment for the jail facility, that would be part of your consent agenda as well, so I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. That is your jail facility study update, and the amount of, I believe, Mr. Honeycutt renegotiated, and it's 27,000.
Okay, now we can discuss that. It was my understanding that we changed the scope of work on that dramatically, and, and I realize it's, they've taken out all of the gas and oil and travel expenses, but did they actually reduce it based upon the scope of work?
Yes. Remember, it was 29,000 plus travel, and this is 27 total.
Well, now, if I recall, we had asked them to do some extensive studies on our existing facilities, and now we're not. Is that correct?
Right.
There's only 2,000 dollars they're taking off?
About, about four, if you count the travel as well. Remember, we, there was a big question about the reimbursables.
In other words, take the four and smile, huh? I, I just, I, I just think the reduction should have been a little bit more because they, they were talking about some extensive time of studying our existing facility. But I don't want to hold that up, so, okay.
I did have one of our former commissioners that served many, well, right many years ago, and he did make the statement that when he was on the board, they were having the very same issues with that jail that we're having today.
And.
Ask me.
And it won't, John.
And it wasn't, John.
And Allison also is the capital project.
Okay, so that's gonna be in consent too?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that was under new business.
Or the budget amendment is, but not the.
The contract?
The contract or the ordinance.
Okay.
The project ordinance.
So what he's referring to is also a walk-on for the radio communications contract, and that will be under new business, but the budget amendment that goes with it appropriates money for that contract, and that is also part of the debt financing. So that will be done, that will be transferred to the capital project fund, and it will be later reimbursed through the debt financing.
And you had a budget amendment on there?
Yes, sir. That's gonna be part of your packet that was walked on today.
Okay. Agenda B.
Yes, sir.
Then next is, under consent, a motion to approve Wayne County Board of Health operating procedures, changes as recommended by the Wayne County Health Department Director, Dave Madden. If you can look on page 52 in red is the changes that he's making. I think it's just clarifying how he receives his application with the county clerk. And then number five, motion to approve easements for due progress for the properties at 1600 Klingman Street and 501 Gateway Drive, Goldsboro, NC, and these have been reviewed and recommended by our county attorney.
I hope so, because they've already started doing the work. Told them they had to do it.
Okay, all right.
And then new business, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we, we have the other seven things, I'm sorry. Number seven, volunteer fire department funding agreements, 2019, 2020, and again, there's an attached memo, really no changes from 1819, so we just need to get that approved so we can begin paying our fire departments. Proclamation recognizing Miller's Chapel AME Zion Church for their 144th Homecoming and Founder's Day proclamation for September 1st. And Commissioner Camardi, do you need to say anything or type?
Now, this is a request from that particular church. The pastor there was at a different church, and I did a similar thing, and she called me and requested that I put together proclamation and then come and make some timely remarks.
Then number nine, appointment of Barry Gray as Wayne County Representative to the Census Bureau Committee, and there's a memo attached. And then again, as we discussed earlier, motion to set public hearing for September 17th, 2019, at 9:15 a.m. for the Electronic Gaming Operations Amendment. And again, this is gonna be referred back to the planning board for their recommendation as well. We talked budget amendments. Any additional questions under consent agenda? Now to new business. Number one, motion to accept tax collector's settlement for calendar year 2018 taxes in prior years, on page 67. Allen's here, we can have him do it during the regular meeting, if you have any questions, or have him discuss now. Number two, motion to approve order directing tax collector to collect the taxes charged in the tax records and receipts for calendar year 2019 and all prior year's outstanding taxes.
Ms. Chairman, going back to, to one here, was there an actual settlement statement or something on item one? I didn't see it in my agenda.
Yes, so it's, it's in a PowerPoint that.
Oh, he's gonna present?
Presented.
Okay, good, good, okay. Thank you.
Okay, and number three, motion to approve work authorization. Number five, Amendment Two from WK Dixon and Company for the Wayne Executive Jetport Corporate Area Expansion contention upon completion of the independent fee analysis and approval by the Department of Aviation. And we do have Brandon here today, if you have any questions about that. So Brandon, if you would like to come up and.
Ms. Chairman, I, I had a lot of questions on this when it was in the agenda, and so I asked the county manager to ask Brandon to come and maybe make a presentation to the full board.
Sure. Good morning. So just a couple things about the jetport while I'm here, so you know where, how we got to this point. You had a corporate area expansion project that was started almost a year ago at this point, Division of Aviation funded project there, along with the Golden Leaf Grant. The, it was to expand the taxiway and aprons on the north, northeast end of the airfield, runway 23 end, and it's to develop four corporate hangar sites, the padwork for four corporate hangars and those taxiways, four 100 by 100 pads, as well as the infrastructure for three future tee hangars. As we've evolved along, we've, we actually have commitments on three of those four pads that aren't fin, they're not finished yet. We're about two to four weeks away from completion, and we have three of those four pads committed to already, so that's, that's way ahead of schedule, which is nice. In that, in the development of that, one of the tenants that signed the lease for two of those pads has developed a flight simulator business. And in talking with Andrew and our engineer, we didn't want to use one of those existing hangar sites for a simulator building. We'd be using up really expensive taxiways and apron asphalt for a building that would never have, basically never have an airplane in it. So we found land that was not being used off the new roadway that's entering the vehicle roadway that we could place these two simulator buildings. So we actually have some money left, some overrun in the budget, if you will, some excess there, that we've got preliminary approval from DOA to use for this site work, which is, which is in this work authorization amendment two here. So I, I got those amounts for you. The, it's 7,300 dollars for engineering work for the flight simulator building, the drainage and utility needs for that proposed site. 36,000 dollars of it is additional full-time construction observation. The original project, the corporate expansion one project, is way over scheduled because we've had to give extra days for rain and bad weather during the spring, so there's overruns in the engineering firm inspecting and, and handling the grant management for that. And then there's another 7,500 dollars that is for grant administration for the waterline project. So in, in conjunction with this expansion, we had, we had a fire flow issue. We had to provide X number of fire gallons per minute fire flow for these buildings, and the most economical way was to run a dedicated fire line from the water system. So in doing that, of course, there's grant funds involved, and we have to have the engineering firm manage those funds. So those, those are the three items in, in this overrun. I know that's a lot, but that's, that's where we are.
Would you possibly explain what type of additional investments would be accommodated by these flight simulators?
So the investment from the county side, from the Wayne County side, we're expecting little to zero investment of county funds. We have grant funds available to handle this on the, the projections have grant money to handle this. We're working with NC DOT to come in and actually put in our parking lots, repave the entrance road, and add parking lots on, on a grant from DOT, which will be a separate grant. So that'll be nice. The, the building, this simulator building, a typical hangar, a 100 by 100 hangar would, would be approximately 500,000 dollars in value. These buildings are a million dollars in value, and the simulators in one building are 8 million dollars. Just, just the simulators in one building. We've got two spec, and he's committed to build one, and that's, so the, the tax, I guess you'd say the tax value of that would be about 8 million dollars is what we're, I get, shouldn't speak that tax value, but the cost, his, his original upfront cost will be about 8 million dollars investment there. And your current tax base at the jetport is only about 8 million dollars. So we, we would be 100% increase in, in those revenue generating assets, just in this one project.
Yeah, that was the news I wanted to share.
And, and while, while we're on that, I, I wanted to share with you, a lot of the, the commission members are always asking, what does the jetport do for us? And I've never really had any good information that I could stand behind to give to you, but the Division of Aviation just released this report, and, and Goldsboro, the Wayne Executive Jetport is in here, and, and they say that we're accounting for just the jetport along with aircraft and employees. We're at 345 employees is what they give credit to, to the Wayne Executive Jetport for having, in Wayne County, 345 jobs, contributing 16,500,000 dollars in personal income, and that includes the aircraft manufacturers, that's across the whole state. They allocate our jetport 16,500,000 dollars of that. In state and local taxes, they're allocating 1,848,000 dollars to our economic impact. And then the big number, which, which we're in the, we're in the top tier of these, this number, is that the Wayne Executive Jetport on an annual basis contributes 58,280,000 dollars to the state economy. So that's a, that's a pretty big number when you look at the value of your jetport and what it contributes to the state and local economy, and that's from the Division of Aviation's new study. Any more questions?
No. Excuse me, just a comment. If you hadn't been out to the jetport lately, you need a ride out of there. I mean, it's, there is a lot going on, a lot going on out there, and it, and it, and it looks fantastic. I mean, it, this, there's a lot going on.
The, the runway is actually closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week to tie in these new taxiways, so if anybody wants a tour, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is a good day, runway's closed. You can see the runway and the whole facility without any traffic, if anybody wants to see. All right?
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
All right. And again, want to thank Brandon for coming today and the work that he is doing. So we appreciate also the Airport Commission as well. Number four is motion to approve Thoroughfare Fire Department securing a tax exempt loan for a truck purchase, and that is on page 77, 78. Again, number five, we have removed from the agenda, again, we put that as a setting of public hearing under consent. Number five A under new business is the RCC contract approval for tower sites, radios, and a copy of that contract is attached, and that has been reviewed by our county and staff attorney. Number six, or five B, is to add to new business, capital projects budget amendment. Again, this will allow us to do the reimbursement back to our general fund once we do the debt financing. This is part of the entire radio capital improvement budget. Then we'll go, number six is a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners video. Number seven is Catch a Glimpse by Public Affairs. Number eight is county managers' comments, nine board of commissioners' comments, closed sessions, board of commissioners' information, and then a German.
Okay, do we have time to go in closed session?
Yeah, not really. Let's take this out, bro.
Take a, take a break, Ann.